We'll call the Newport City Council meeting to order. For Monday, May 15th, 2017, 6:30 PM. All members of council are present. Others include Laura Dogen, City Manager, and James Johnson, Clerk, Treasurer. The next item is to approve the minutes of May 1st, 2017. We would need a motion. There is one correction. Under New Business, Ms. Verbowen asked why the gym is closed to the public. Ms. Dogen explained that there's been a rash of vandalism. Persons or groups must make reservations to use the gym. Not to us, the gym. It's to use the gym.
For us to use the gym?
Oh, you meant for us to use. You forgot. One word. I just put the -- I just changed it there. I just put "to use the gym."
You guys are worse than Dick May.
That's the only correction. So we would need a motion to approve the minutes with that correction.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made is in a second.
Second.
Made and seconded, discussion. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oops, oops, sorry.
No, this is not discussion. In the past, we used to come into our box here and pick up the minutes after Jim had them typed up. And then if there were corrections to be made, a lot of times I would come down and have Jim pick them. But now we're getting them the Friday before in an envelope, so we don't have time to make the corrections prior to the meeting. It'd be nice if we could get the copies put back in our boxes and not have to wait two weeks. Thank you.
Did we vote? Yes, we did.
Yes.
Yes, we did. Next item is comments by members of the public. This gives members of the public an opportunity to comment at items which are not on the agenda. Yes?
Susan Watson from Spruce Street, for those who may not know me. Even though I've been away for two and a half months, I have kept up with what's happening, both through the papers and through the videos of the city council meeting. What is disturbing me is that I'm seeing a lot of comments about the upcoming centennial next year, but I'm not seeing much emphasis on what's going on this year. And what I see this year is a lot of the city Newport going downhill. We had All About Cake move out, and recently we've had three stores close. We've had -- excuse me. We've had Radio Shack, which sold everything from alarm clocks to TVs. We had Wider Than the Sky, which was a wonderful children's bookstore and toy store. And we had Euphoria, which was a very dynamic yarn and knitting store. But probably the greatest loss to Newport was Cynthia Moore. Cynthia spearheaded the decorating of the windows in the Newberry store for the Christmas season, which added so much to Main Street. I walk by there today. The windows are filthy. There is detritus in all the window sills with tired-looking soap dock box derby cars in the window. The tiles in front of the store are all broken. Some of them are right out on the sidewalk, which is detrimental to the public walkway there. Cynthia also brought us Book Day last year, which was fantastic. She introduced us to mystery writers, and she introduced us to an expert on oysters, while we heard him talk while we were sitting at the ciderhouse pub eating oysters. But one of the biggest losses was she and Jim brought us Jazz Festival, two years in a row. It was extremely successful. These things have not been picked up on or have not been carried forward. And this I find very sad, and I find it very disturbing. What I'm hearing is the centennial next year. What's going to happen is, we may not even have many things to bring people to Newport, except a plethora of dollar stores. So, excuse me. The other thing that's bothering me is that I see, and I've read -- I don't see. I've read that the centennial is glorifying war by having a reenactment. What I would suggest is that the Centennial Committee glorify peace and maybe have a project that the whole community could partake in, rather than just be observers of a reenactment of a battle. I find this very sad and depressing, and I hope that you will listen to what I say and maybe take steps to do something about Newport this year and not just wait for the centennial. Thank you.
This is the old lady speaking again, but I like to bring this up, and you can read between the lines if you like. But when we had Great Outdoors on Main Street and we had the other stores on Main Street, they had to move off Main Street. We had benches on Main Street. We had to take them out because nobody could walk by the benches without getting cussed at or sworn to or anything else. I'm going back to when my daughters had kids, and they were my grandkids, and they'd walk downtown, and they were afraid to walk downtown because when they passed these benches, they'd get all kinds of comments. And they weren't good comments. So Newport and, like I said, the Great Outdoors had to leave because you couldn't get in there because they had a walkway that you'd come off the sidewalk and go in underneath. And it was so crowded with everybody that they weren't there to buy anything. They were just there standing around and looking at you and talking back to you and all this stuff. So, and the reason I'm bringing this up is now we have to close the place downstairs for people to use the municipal building. And why? Because we have no control over people anymore? Or we don't want to have any control? Or are we afraid to have any control? Because I feel that the big word is, oh, we don't want to be discriminating. We don't want to be stereotyping. We don't want to be doing this. But because of that, everything is going downhill. And I don't think, even in the big cities, you know, there are some places that do find that. But we're not a big city up here, and I don't understand why that's going, and we're letting it go that way. So anyways, you can read between the lines and what I'm trying to say. But it's going to get worse before it gets better unless something is done.
Thank you. This is the way.
On a positive note, I'd like to invite you and all of you in the city council and the general public to the Northeast Kingdom Fiddler's Contest this coming Saturday at the East Side. It's a $5 cover charge. We're trying to build a major fiddler's contest here in Newport. It can grow if people come. So it's important, and we'd love to have you. There's some fine music. We've got fiddlers coming from around New England, Vermont, and the eastern townships to compete. We also have dinners at the East Side with fine fiddling on Friday and Saturday night. So hopefully you can come.
Trying to keep all the hands. Ma'am, is that -- you can have your hand up here and after.
I have a slightly different issue. I have this coffee for everybody here. I attend a lot of meetings. I'm not quite sure why, but I do. And one of the meetings I attend is the Planning Commission. I'm glad to see that Charlie Elliott and Clark are here. What came up and was discussed at the Planning Commission was an application for the Certificate of Occupancy. It was discussed at length. There was a lot of work done by the Planning Commission on how to put it together. It was warned twice. People attended. And the final document was passed forward to City Council as per protocol. No problem. City Council looked at the document, passed it, put in the fees. End of discussion. It was on its merry way. Except, when I look at the document that City Council approved and the one that the Planning Commission approved, there are several significant differences. You will see that I've highlighted them. That's a little disturbing to me. I would expect that things like typos and fees and phone numbers get changed, but I would not expect that content gets changed. I would not expect, for example, that different criteria get put in there, additional criteria. There are two on -- I don't know what page this is now. There's one on the last page, the Certificate of Occupancy. There's one on the page before that, the final version. It's on page two at the bottom. There are two additional pieces in there about commercial and multifamily properties. And then there's a piece about demolition. If we have a process, and it's a legal process, it's warned, it's official, how can a document get changed when it gets to the next stage without the public being aware of that? How does that fit in with transparency? And if I found it in this document, am I going to find it anywhere else? It's really disturbing, and I would really like you to respond to it.
First of all, we do not approve these documents. We approve the bylaw only. The department heads approve the documents. It'd be just -- we -- the job of the council is to approve the zoning bylaw only and the fee structure. We do not approve the documents. Forms are working forms. We do not tie the hands of our department heads. We approve policy, but we do not micromanage. Not really micromanage, but it's not our job to approve the actual document. It may have been shown as part of the bylaw when it came to the council, but the job of the council is not to approve the actual form.
If the Planning Commission does what they're asked to do, and they did, if they put it in a document, they warn it appropriately, the public comes, and it's approved, how does it then change when it came before you? And it did change. How does that happen?
But we don't approve the forms.
Who changes it?
That is the job of the city manager and the department heads because they have that authority. They didn't change the bylaw. They just changed the working document to go along with the bylaw.
But they put in new criteria.
No, this document meets the bylaw. Charlie can explain it, but I can tell you that the council does not approve forms. It'd be just like the form, I'll say, that the police chief uses or a justice here from Rep. She's got a form that deals with moorings and Proudy Beach and that. The council just approves the policy for those facilities.
Then what's the point of warning it publicly?
That was to approve the bylaw. The actual bylaw and the fee structure, not to approve the form.
But the warnings did not approve the fee structure. You guys approved the fee structure.
We approved the fee structure, but the Planning Commission comes up with the bylaw.
They didn't. They did not come up with it.
Oh, that is not -- the form is not the bylaw. A form is used to enforce the bylaw.
The bylaw content has changed according to this.
Not the bylaw. This is not the bylaw. The bylaw -- I'll let Charlie explain because -- go ahead, Charlie.
Okay. Number one, the warning in the public hearing was only for the bylaw. All right. The bylaw reads is this. "It shall be unlawful to use or occupy or permit the use or occupancy of any land or structure or part thereof created, erected, changed, converted, or wholly or partly altered or enlarging its use or structure after the effective date of this bylaw." The form you're looking at, that we put together, is a little more specific. And the one area that seemed to create the most problem is, we said, it also applies to demolition.
There are two areas that--
Let me finish. The bylaw says changed, converted, or wholly or partly altered. Now, I really think demolition is wholly changed and altered. There is never a situation where we can put every single thing that can happen into the bylaw. The bylaw addresses things in a general overview manner. If you look, what would you find in here that would be a specific situation in the bylaw?
When this was raised at Planning Commission, it was in reference to water. That was how it came up. This doesn't even include that. Does this make sense?
I don't know where you're coming from right now. I'm lost.
I bet.
I'll have to study it.
But the bottom line is, the council does not approve forms. The bottom line is, the city council gets recommended bylaw changes from the Planning Commission. And then we get recommended fee structures from the zoning administrator. And that is -- let me finish, please. That is the job of the council. We do not approve the actual form used. I mean, Charlie's been using the zoning form for, I forget how many years, and he's modified it over the years. It's one form that is used for permits. The council just does not approve forms. That is the -- forms are working documents too. These forms are -- any form is fluid.
Then the Planning Commission is involved, not with this, is the worst of energy.
No, it was not. The other thing that I would add to that is these forms are administrative tools. We have a responsibility to modify and update them and use them so that whatever we're doing on this particular floor translates down to our accounts receivable. So it's common for us to revamp our forms. Our recreational forms are a good example. Our water and sewer forms are a good example. This is no different than any other form we use in this environment. We have a duty and a responsibility to constantly improve our forms. Period.
Can I say something? I've got a whole office of a form down there that helped me conform to state statute. They don't tell me what form to use. They may send me an example. I like to do any form I want that helps me comply with state statute. I can change it anytime I want. It's got nothing to do with the statute, as long as it complies with what the state wants me to do for the city council. Nobody told me how to do a water sewer form. Nobody told me how to do a tax bill. Nobody told me how to do my billing forms. Laura is right. Forms are nothing more than an administrative tool. They can be changed by a department head anytime they want, as long as it fulfills the bylaw, the fee structure, or the statute.
Karen?
Just wanted to provide some context to Sue's earlier comments. So some of what you're seeing on Main Street with the businesses is a direct fallout of Walmart. And the community, of course, voted to bring Walmart in by an overwhelming number. And so, you know, we expect to see this fallout from six months to two years after Walmart comes into a community. And there are groups working to bring other businesses into the community. It takes time. And so, you know, I appreciate you wanting to bring this into a public forum, but it's a little misguided to put it at the city council. They are supportive of businesses coming in. But it's certainly, they're not the ones going out to bring businesses in directly. And so I think as a community, to speak in terms of the events that you talk about, you know, all those events that you mentioned came from individuals. Came from people who got their friends and their neighbors together and said, let's do these events. And that's where the best of the events come from individuals and their individual creativity. And that's what we need. You know, we can ask the city for support for these things, but it's not really their job to put on events for a community in that way. So I would say, you know, with regard to the former Newberry building, it's a private piece of property. What happened with the holiday windows was working with, directly with, the owner of the building. That was facilitated by the city, by Newport City Renaissance as well. And that certainly could happen again if we were to get in touch with the owner. So those are all pieces that I think as a community, the community needs to work to make these things happen. But just not to leave it on such a dismal note that nothing's happening in Newport because there's a lot of hard work being done by a number of different groups. And it's hard, you know, we're not seeing the results yet, but it does take time, and things, good things aren't coming, and good things are here.
I would hope that somebody would at least do something about the Newberry building. That is--
It could be you, though.
-- shape. You know what? Let me tell you. I did. I tried to track this down. I started with Jim Campbell because he had it for me for sale. I talked to him. He said, I don't know who the owner is. Someone told me--
Will we give you the name of the owner?
Someone told me they -- I'm telling you what I did because you said it could be you. So after I got finished with that, someone told me it was the Bo family. I called the Bo family. I called the law office. I called the Bo family. I left message after message. And one of the main reasons I did, because I could see the ceiling was falling in when I worked on this. I left messages. I got absolutely nowhere.
We can give you the owner's name and email and you can send off, or someone can. I'm just saying, not to discount what you tried to do, but--
No, I know, but you know what?
It is a private piece of--
I saw.
But it is a private piece of property.
And the city council, and the mayor, and the city manager, all have responsibility to Newport. And especially if the public walkway is being encroached upon. It's just, I mean, if you can give me the name and you can give me the reason for calling them or give me the permission, I will gladly do it. But it is such an eyesore.
And Karen, I'd like to make a comment about a couple of the businesses. Sure. Why did the New Sky do not close because of Walmart? I know firsthand from speaking with them. It was the internet that made them close. It was not Walmart in that case. And Radio Shack, the parent company went bankrupt. The parent company, Radio Shack, went bankrupt. And the supply, Radio Shack in St. J closed. It's because the supplier, Radio Shack is gone. They filed Chapter or whatever it is because they've been bankrupt for quite a while, and this one held on. And so their parent company, the one that supplies Radio Shack, went bankrupt.
Yeah, and that's a great point, Paul, because we've really been dealing for the last, probably, 12 years with the largest retailer in the world, and that's essentially the internet. That's impacted all of our--
I mean, even Walmart's struggling with the internet. I mean, you know, I know they came here, the public voted for it, but even Walmart is struggling. All big retailers and even small retailers now are struggling with the internet. It's called amazon.com, and it's called have the packages delivered to you in two days. And so that is what people -- even the big retailers are struggling with Amazon. And that is the -- and that's, I mean, I've read study after study on that. And it's the internet, and everyone's trying to figure out how to compete with Amazon. And that is the issue that I know. And it's hard to track smaller businesses also because the smaller businesses don't have the buying power of an Amazon. And that's the problem too.
And that's what we're trying to, you know, that's what we as a community, but also as in organizations that work on this are trying to solve is, what is our new model for sort of the retail sector in small towns? You don't necessarily want to wait for everything, but you have to be able to draw businesses and to do a certain number of, you know--
And just to make a disclaimer, I don't work at Walmart, just to let you people know. I don't work there anymore because there was a big splash how I had a job. Well, just to let everyone know, that job paid the bills for three months. But then I got something that came along. So I'm not trying to promote Walmart or anything over anything else. Because I had someone say that to me. Oh, you just tout Walmart because you work there. Well, I don't work there, and I do my homework on retail. And I did college classes on retail recently when I took some classes. And I did a big study on the Amazon and the internet. And these stores are struggling because of the internet. And as far as the Newberry building, yes, it does look the way it does. But we can only do so much, as Karen said. That's a private landlord, and we can only do so much. And just for Brian's, you know, with Great Outdoors, they moved because of the condition of the building. It wasn't -- it was people hanging out, yes, but it was also the condition of the building. It's the reason why they moved. Two other stores moved out of over there because of the condition of the building. The building, I can tell you firsthand again from talking with -- I've talked with a lot of people. They may not think I do, but they moved. Euphoria moved at the time because the tenants upstairs were letting their plumbing leak all through the building. And the insurance companies stopped paying claims. And that's why they moved out of those buildings. It's not because the city council wasn't doing enough. It wasn't because the city wasn't doing enough. It's because their insurance companies stopped paying the claim for the damage that was being done by the people who were living upstairs by letting their plumbing leak. That is one of the big reasons why they moved out of those buildings. I know that firsthand too. And so, I mean, Mr. Bo's just shaking his head and--
The wall place, yeah.
Yeah, they moved because of the--
Sewer kept getting into all of the holes in the back.
The ceiling kept collapsing, and yeah. And so I just, you know, we can only do so much with private landlords too. I mean, that was great, what they did at Christmas with the building, you know, the Newberry building. But as Karen said, she's got to contact Mr. Bo, and she has all the contact information on that aspect.
Do you want me to take it on myself, or is the city council, because it's encroaching upon the sidewalk, are you willing to do it and contact them?
I mean, the tiles are in the city right away.
They're in their little alcoves.
But that alcove's not in the city.
It is out on the sidewalk. If you walk there, there's some tile out on the sidewalk.
Maybe you could look at that, Laura, and we could look at that aspect.
I think the answer to that is, call the city manager. Say, this is something that's going on. Give her the chance to call and see if she can solve the problem.
Okay, I think--
Then if she can't solve the problem, then you come to the council. But I sit here, I came in here in a good mood, and I'm sitting here thinking, God, what a failure I've been for 18 years because, you know, it's my fault that something has broke downtown. There's a process, but when you first come in here and if I hadn't walked down there myself and seen it, I would have never known.
John, I think you've done an excellent job. And I'm here because I feel this is the administration of the city of Newport. I have concerns. As I explained to Karen, I tried to contact Rick Bo. I went head over heels trying to find out who to talk to. I left messages. So I'm here. If you turn around, if Laura can't resolve it and she wants me to get in, feel free to contact me. But I feel it's the city's administration first.
She shouldn't have you call. You call her. Then if it doesn't get fixed, then you let the council know, and then we'll apply the pressure.
Okay. Well, I've left her now tonight, so. And she'll let me know.
Anything-- Do I have your email? I don't know that I do.
I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm still having problems with Karen's not stopping when I'm on the crosswalk. I go out here, I'm waiting to go across the road, and three or four cars will go by me without stopping or even slowing down. And I know they're supposed to yield to pedestrians. I meant to the police department, tell them. I told the city manager four or five times, and they don't do nothing. There's still some, when I just came over here, three cars went by me before I could get across the road. They're supposed to stop for pedestrians, and they don't do it. And I think somebody better start doing something about it, like giving tickets out because I've been trying to get them to do something for three months now, and they haven't done anything yet that I can see.
Chief, do we have those crosswalk signs?
No, they're all damaged last year. I don't know if Tom -- I think there was one left at the beginning of the year. But I was going to bring it up under New Business, but the council asked for increased traffic enforcement at last council's meeting. We've had an additional 46 traffic stops since the last council meeting, primarily on Western Ave, West Main Street, and Mount Vernon. And we've had the speed cart deployed in those three areas. I understand Mr. Corkin's concern of pedestrian safety. It's one of our highest priorities in the city as well. We're getting ready to repaint those crosswalks when the weather permits, and DPW, the police department, can get together, hopefully making some of those access points a little more visible to traffic. One thing that I've expressed to Mr. Corkins and multiple people throughout town is, yes, the law does stay-- yes, the law does state that vehicles are supposed to yield to pedestrians at crosswalks. However, a vehicle can't yield to a pedestrian if it can't see the pedestrian. So don't just assume that because you're in the crosswalk, you know, you would just walk right out in there. And there are plenty of times where I, in full uniform, have to pause and let one or two vehicles go by. I understand that that's frustrating from a pedestrian standpoint, and it's certainly not something that we would encourage, that type of behavior to encourage in the city, but with all the other traffic enforcement that we're doing, crosswalk enforcement is one of the most difficult to do.
The crosswalk signs are damaged, are there any more durable ones? Can we put out, can we put out like a cement barrier? Not, I mean, something that's more durable, because I know those other ones got run over, which I thought was rather strange, because they're in the middle of the crosswalk, yet they seemed to kept getting hit.
Anything that's placed in the middle of the roadway needs to be, for lack of a better term, collapsible, should a vehicle hit it, you can't put a permanent structure, drive a signpost in the ground? I mean, what I would like to do personally, yeah, I'd put a Jersey barrier.
I was saying that, I haven't seen just things I knew. I knew if there was something more durable than what we have out there, because those really got destroyed quickly.
We continue to look at grant opportunities for some of the flashing yellow signs for crosswalk safety, as well as the permanent speed mounted signs. But again, it really comes down to a cost issue. Those signs cost about $14,000, plus the labor for DPW to install them, so they're really not a cheap alternative. I think they work well, and I think other police chiefs that I've spoken with have high praises for them. But we're just looking for the right grant opportunity to hopefully be able to capitalize on it.
All right. Then that's it for public comments, then we'll move on. The next item are the event requests, and we have Jessica just here to go over them with us.
I suppose I should pull up the chair here, so we can have a look at the agenda. Okay. So you guys probably saw in your packets there that there's a number of requests that have come through. Partially, this is partially because of the new policy that we have in place, and going through this process, I guess, for the first time with people, a little bit of growing pains. But still following in line with the idea that we want everyone to ask permission from council to get any waived fees, or to approve any large events that come through. So we have just a number of them on the docket because of the way that they all came in, and the way the council meeting landed. But the first one, of course, is the Memorial Day Parade, it's coming up pretty quickly here in a week or so. Application submitted by Jim Johnson. You saw in your packet, the cover page there, also the invoice with the fees that were approved by council, in the same process that we've been going along. So I'm actually going to turn it over to Jim to talk a little bit about that.
Well, just right, I filled out the application, and it'll be on Monday, the 29th. And historically, we've always had the parade, and DPW and the police, and the department have set it up over at the park. And we can do the same thing again. We'll assemble here, we'll march to the park, and do our ceremony, and in an hour, an hour and 10 minutes, it's all over. Our request on behalf of American Legion is the fees be waived for that, since it's been going on for 40, 45 years, we've never paid, never had to pay anything for it. I find it kind of hard to charge an organization that's made up of people that were here because of them, basically, and I don't think it's right. And on top of that, both American Legion and VFW are hanging on by their shoestrings. They're having a very difficult time, because membership is dropping, can't get anybody to join, anybody to do anything. But we feel we need to keep on Memorial Day as long as we possibly can, with the...
Mr. Wilson?
I've been filming on this for two weeks now, and I hear the comments from people around town, "What are we, a bunch of cheapos in this town and stuff?" And then we, the one we did two weeks ago for the kids, this is the first time the council knew about all of this stuff and requests to waive money, other than we're going to bill them $37. So, but on here, I don't know what we want to do tonight, but on the cover letter, it was put out, the rec department, Parks and Rec recommended we waive so much, and then the other we bill. I don't see that on any of the four or five requests tonight. So I'm just out, have no idea. I don't think the Legion should pay anything, this is a Memorial Day ceremony. But this is a person, I went through all of these, besides, and this tells us the fee. Now we're seeing deposits. So are we saying that the Legion has to come up with $88.13 in deposits upfront that will be refundable? Which we've never done in my 18 years here. And then more importantly, if that's the route we're going to go, then what are we waiving? Are we waiving a whole $11.90, or are we waiving? See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We, the council knew nothing of this at the last meeting. And I think Mr. Johnson was surprised too, for his upcoming parade. And now every one of these, we're having some portions are refundable. And then in one of them, we have a refundable amount, and then one is non-refundable. So we, as a council, are expecting us to come up tonight and waiver how much? I mean, do you have, what we need is for every one of these, if this is what, if this is a...
So I'm going to give this to you, because I hear what you're saying absolutely. And we've gone through a little bit of evolution with this process, because obviously it's the first time we've gone through any of this. And there was a couple of different drafts of this memo, one of which included a recommendation based on the workload for the recreation department, which is where that initial recommendation was for the Children's Day.
I understand, but we were blindsided with this two weeks ago. We knew nothing of it. And then it gets in the papers. We got people saying, "Are you trying to become like Derby now, not have any events?" Because maybe some of these events, maybe the Legion can't afford an $88 check, which we've never asked for before. And then if we do that, and then we're going to give them back their $83, which are the deposits. So what are you asking us to waiver right now, tonight, on all five of them? We don't know. And it would be really nice if we're going to change policy within the city, that the council gets an update before we start doing this. Because personally, are we trying to nickel and dime stuff now? I mean, we put parades on for people, and it's our tax money that goes in and helps all of these organizations. If I was running an organization, I'd say, "I'm not going to do any more parades here." I mean, I'm dead serious.
I agree.
But the council takes hit. I've had people approaching me, wanting to know, "What are we, nickel and dime? Are we becoming cheap now in Newport?" And yet we didn't even know about it. So we have to answer questions to the public. When we were blindsided on, and it's a great form, it tells you all what maybe the impact is to the city, but there's also another impact. People come in here, spend monies, and, you know, and then to read the stuff in the paper, and that was a great juicy article, you know, "Is the city becoming cheap?" I don't like that stuff, and I hate getting blindsided and try to answer questions to the public. When I say, "Well, we didn't know this policy was happening." I've said enough, thank you.
So I'm going to...
Can I just ask another question that is complimentary? So we heard earlier that the council approves fees but not forms. So the form, I get, but has the council approved this fee structure?
Yes. It's all part of, we approve the fee structure of the rec department every year.
So essentially, let's just back it up a little bit and give a little bit of history. So the rec department, as most of you know, has gone through a restructuring. We've talked about how our budget has been arranged, and that we want more of a focus on maintenance, and we want the money to be put towards, you know, maintenance projects that have maybe been neglected for a while. So when I got into this position, there was no existing field use application of any sorts for people that came in and use our spaces or our facilities. What we did have was this information here, that is all of the rates, which has been approved yearly by council every year. So nowhere on here does it say that these rates are going to be waived for anyone. So anybody that signs up for an event, if they had been put through a process of applying to use that, which they should have been all along, why there wasn't, I don't know. I wasn't, I wasn't, you know, that was before me. So nobody is technically, by the policy that we didn't really have, other than this fee structure, said that anything was going to be waived. Historically, the recreation department has waived things. I don't know, out of the nature of our good heart, I suppose. But as we start to relook at our maintenance goals, to lose out on that revenue and just spending money that was budgeted and allotted for certain projects in our budget on other things that are coming in for other groups that are not part of what we planned on, seems a little bit backwards. So what we're trying to do is show that the costs that have been associated with all of these events, they just haven't been shown on paper before. So these costs have always been there for the recreation department, and have been absorbed by the taxpayer. So this is just a tabulation from a work-based perspective, off of the rates that were approved by council, of what all of these things cost. So it is, I absolutely agree with you, from a friendly, good business standpoint, this is totally blind signing everyone that has come in, you know, for these events and has been used to getting them for free. Absolutely agree, and trust me, I'm the first point of entry for all of these people, so I have to answer all those questions when these guys even submit an application. And it's not easy to say, "We're doing something different that we haven't been doing all along," but this is the right way to do it.
We asked, we asked for what the events cost.
It's hard to see. It is hard to look at.
There was a time where we didn't formally, I think, vote on it, but we asked, I think, Andy at one time, to try to start tabulating what the events cost. We didn't, I don't think there was a formal motion on it, but I think there was a consensus way back of the council to request, right, Jim? We asked what the, a tabulation of what the true costs of the events were. Because we knew that there was an impact on public works, on rec, and on the police. But, you know, we didn't really know what the impact was on these events, knowing what the costs were.
And it sounds like what you're saying too, is that since we've been doing this all along, isn't it technically covered? Well, the thing is, we're getting new events in all the time. And the other thing is, as we're looking at our new maintenance goals, we have to start to sort out, what do we want to spend the money that we had budgeted for on? So that's, this is all part of a growing process of trying to get ourselves fixed here in the rec department, and put the money where it's supposed to go. So it certainly isn't easy to look at, but this is all based off of existing fees that were approved. You know, and yes, we're asking people to pay things, perhaps that's totally good to you guys. It's, you know, the merit of things is on you guys. This is, from my perspective, is just a work-based perspective, that's what I was kind of told to do, so.
I understand, we set the rate structure. But I bet if I pull up the last one that we approved, there's nothing in here like, under the new requirements for all applicants, that there's a, we have to submit, drop a deposit for possible field damage.
So that is...
That's never been in a rate structure.
We have had some deposits, some damage deposits for things like renting the gate lane, things like that. There was no consistent policy across the board, so I did some research based on what other communities do, and that was a standard procedure. Again, it's refundable, so although you have to come up with it upfront, we also allow people to submit that in a separate check, we hold the check, and put it through...
Yeah, we've had deposits over the years, because the gateway rent, gateway rental required a deposit.
So for some things, we did, but if somebody rents the ball fields and blows a donut in your field, you know, we're not necessarily depositing those funds unless the damage occurs. So what I've been telling folks that have been applying for these, where that is a new impact that they necessarily didn't foresee, they can put it in a separate check, we only use it if we need to. So hopefully there wouldn't be some upfront damage, but we do need to have a way to...
Refunded deposits.
Well done.
We do need to have a way to recover it.
We need to know this stuff too.
Okay.
This is the first time I've seen here where now we're having the deposits for field reservation, stuff like that. We've never done it in the past, I don't believe. No, we haven't.
There's that $25...
But it would be nice to know this stuff before we start approving things for all these organizations. And then, as of two weeks ago, I walk out of here and get all kinds of calls. It's hard to walk the streets and meet people asking me, "What the hell are y'all doing? It's our money to start with." And I sit back and say, "Well, I know I should be able to have the answer, but I don't know." And that's not the way we should be doing business. I think if we're going to do this, we inform the council, and then we say, "Okay, we all agree on it. Now every organization wants a parade, these are your rules." But sometimes I think rules are coming up that we don't know about, but we're the ones that end up explaining to people. And it's pretty embarrassing when you have to say, "I have no idea what you're doing."
That's fair, yep. So, given that, do you guys want to move forward with the things on the agenda? Does anyone else have any questions before we get into that?
I have one question. So on the first application for the parade, the additional items on the invoice, parade support, police, public works, and parks, and rec, I don't see that on the fee structure.
So this is, this form is used for field and facility rates. There are many other rates that we have for the recreation department. You know, for somebody that wants to rent the podium, or somebody, you know, other things that are just not included on this, because this is meant to be user-friendly for folks that are renting field and facilities. So this special event fee, I don't know if that, that was passed down to me, so I don't know what the history is as far as if that was approved or not, or if that's just meant to be a tabulation to show the impact on the different departments for that effort.
You mean this right here?
Yeah, so I don't know if that was...
I believe it's part of what we asked for the impact cost. This was part of what we asked for down here, the impact on the departments, we asked for that. And that's what you're breaking, you're itemizing it, to show the additional items, public works, police, and parks. Which there was no set fee, that's the hourly, I'm assuming, I'll pick on, the chief is here. Parade support police, like for the Memorial Day, it says $200. I'm assuming that's the wage for the officers.
It's a flat fee of $50 an hour per officer. The way that we came to that tabulation was a recommendation from the council, because prior to that, what we had was, based on the union contract, we would get an officer, a part-time officer, who costs, say, just using nice round numbers, $20 an hour. Or you have someone like Senior Officer Lancaster, who might cost them, like, I'm just using nice round numbers, $50 an hour. Well, the person that was applying for police services specifically occurred down at the gateway most times, was, "Well, give me the $25 an hour officer, I don't want the $50 an hour officer." Well, pursuant to the union contract, I had to put those special details out to bid, and allow seniority base to bid on those. So when it came back and said, "Okay, your fee for this event is $37 an hour," the person was going, "Well, I don't want a $37 an hour officer, I want a $25 an hour officer." So we made a flat fee of $50 an hour per officer, and $25 an hour per police vehicle, to compensate not only the police department, but the training and everything else that goes into having a certified law enforcement officer present. That was approved by the council prior to, when we were doing details at the gateway, we changed it for North Country Hospital ER, et cetera, et cetera.
So certainly any of the fees that are listed on here, I would never, ever go upon myself to just kind of make up a fee. So whatever's here was either handed down to me, and hopefully was approved somewhere along the way by council. But again, that kind of came before me, so.
Me too.
Yeah. So I had to do my best to work for the way I got there.
Jess, do you have that breakdown of the piece, everything, somewhere?
Right on the last page.
No, I mean everything, not just for the field.
It's on the website, I don't have a copy of it, it's with me on hand, and I can get that to you.
Do you remember when that was approved? Must have been in the past two years.
Yeah, it was, it's been on the last year, I think they do it yearly.
We do it yearly.
Yeah. Yep, so. And the other thing too is, we've gone around about how to make those recommendations. So to answer your question, Mr. Wilson, last time I did make a recommendation for the children's parade. As I've gotten more of these in, the nature of these different events are all different, and they're all unique. So for me, I, as a recreation director, would never make a call based on merit, or what deserves to be free because it's good for the community, or what deserves to be free because it's for the kids, or for the veterans, or for whatever group of interest. Any recommendation that I would make would be based on the workload and the impact on... Um, any recommendation that I would make would be based on the workload that, and the impact on our staff and our budget. I will leave to you guys, any decisions you want to make based on the fact that this is all brand new to everyone, so we should waive it for the whole first year, or whatever you guys want to do. That's totally up to you. For me, I just try to stay subjective and just use the numbers that I was given, so.
So tonight, if we want to decide to act, we come up to the Awareness Memorial Walk, one hundred and fifty. Council approved, one hundred and fifty. For the Legion, for the Memorial Day Parade. Because that money, some of it is refundable, we can waive the whole works. But now we're sitting here at the meeting, the Farm to School Block Party, of which two hundred and eleven is non-refundable. So we're supposed to sit here and do the math and then waive a certain amount? No, I'm only-
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. And believe me, Laura and I went around about this, should we include the recommendations for the department? Should we leave it to you guys? So I can give you those numbers and advocate and talk about the workload perspective for sure.
I think in the past, we've always had the recommendation from the head of the rec department.
We opted not to do that because, um, Jess took a lot of heat. And we decided to take her out of the heat and let you guys decide this based on the merit and the information that was presented to you. So, um, we think this is a cleaner way to do it and, uh, it gives you full control over how you'd like to proceed.
But if the council wants going forward for that to happen, or even tonight, I can, I can give some information from a work standpoint and a workload standpoint. And I won't, I won't-
No, we don't need that.
There are all of these, one criteria I have is nonprofit versus for-profit. That's a criteria that I have. Um, are these all nonprofits?
No, so there's a variety here.
That's a criteria I have, because I can understand, you know, supporting, but if you're a for-profit and you want the city to waive everything, you know, year in, year out, that gets, you know, that, because that's a criteria, that's one thing that I get concerned about, is that aspect.
Yeah, and as I said before, the nature of these events varies. Some of these are groups, you know, an actual organization, they may be, you know, a nonprofit, certified nonprofit. There may be other groups that are just mom and pops that want to come in and raise money for someone that's battling a medical issue in their family, um, and they're asking the city for help, but have no overhead organization or umbrella organization to be even be considered a nonprofit, so. And then there are people that are strictly for-profit, you know, so the, the nature is different of all of them, but, um.
And I think some of this is good because, of course, we've been beat up too on the council for our tax rate in the city. And we have people, you know, coming every year and want us to do more and more, yet I budget and the taxpayers too. So, I mean, no, it's a sticky wicket here. It's a catch-22 that we really are in. Um, over, you know, who do we, and it does put us in a bind. Who do we waive, who do we, who do we don't waive, and, and that, that is the sticky wicket too.
Mr. Mayor, um, I think we're all going to have differing opinions on merit. I mean, I might value something on this list more highly than Mr. Wilson does, and we're going to be arguing about that. I think it's going to be a ridiculous mess to try to, try to judge these each individually, and we need to have a uniform policy. I hear you about the profit versus nonprofit issue, but if a for-profit agency or organization is going to bring in tons of people to the area and make a huge boon for businesses, do we really want to charge them more than a parade that's to value something?
That's where we disagree. If it's a for-profit, um, you would, you can help them maybe for a couple of years, but then after that, they should be able to do it on their own. That's the way I look at it. Government is to help people maybe the first couple of years with an event or, or something. But if you're a for-profit and you're holding an event to make money, you either, after a couple of years, you ought to make sure that your event can succeed without having to come to the taxpayers all the time.
Well, I'm not talking about succeeding. I'm talking about the boon for businesses, the hotels, the restaurants. Don't we as a council want to support that level of economic development? I know I do.
Well, we do, but they ought to be able to do it on their own after a period of time. See what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. A for-profit, it's just like with the IRS, they expect you, if you're in a business, they expect you to make money after so many years, or else they'll come after you. You know, I'm not a fan of government subsidizing something forever, and that's the way I look at it. And the for-profit, go ahead.
I just have to bring the cruel reality to the conversation for your consideration that we have a number of people who are in delinquent tax mode. And it's great for the, that the hotels can be full for a weekend, it's great that the restaurants are thriving. That does absolutely nothing to your tax, to your tax base. It, it does not serve your common taxpayer in any way. What it does is it allows your businesses to pay their taxes, but it does not in any way benefit, uh, your seniors, your delinquent taxpayers, your people who are struggling. So it's, it's, you haven't been through a budget process yet, you haven't been through the delinquent tax sale process yet. There's a whole nother perspective that, um, our newer members of the board will soon experience and you will, you will realize the harsh reality.
I do understand your perspective, but I also think it's valuable to think about, okay, so if a business brings in X number of dollars that they weren't anticipating, then maybe another business is going to say, hey, maybe I can make it in Newport too.
Do you think that that's going to have an impact on the tax base?
Eventually, yes, I do.
I don't, I think you're going to see people be harmed by the amount of effort and expenses that the organization is putting out. And I'm, I'm just asking you to hold that information.
Thank you. And I think too, Julie, you bring up a great point, and that's the beauty of policy. If the council wants to figure out, or what, you know, our assistant's doing some research for other municipalities, we are not the only city in town that has fought this age-old battle, I'm sure. And I know that when I worked in other municipalities, the council or the select work did have parameters on a number of events that the city would support each year. They were grandfathered in based on their length of existence. They put a cap on three or four events per year. Um, and then the only way a new one could come in is if an old one went. Um, so there's a lot of different ways that you can work that, and you can ask for hard numbers on, you know, things like vibrancy and stuff, because that is, you know, vibrancy in a city is important to get people to move here and to have good vibes here. But at what expense to the existing taxpayers and what are they absorbing? So that is a tough question. I don't envy you guys, but-
We could think about what you were saying on the number of events. We had to do that with coin drops.
Right.
We had, we got to the point that we could have had a coin drop every week in the city. Mr. Wilson, remember that. We had to do it as a first-come, first-served with coin drops because we had everybody wanting to hold a coin drop. So we limited to, we limited it to one a month, basically, the coin drop. And then we, we had the ones that were reserved for the veterans organizations, and then we had the rec and the fire department. But it's basically, even with, it's a first-come, first-served as far as that, for that number. Maybe we need to look at that, okay, saying this number of events on a first-come, first-served will be subsidized, subsidized for the city. On a first-come, first-served, and then if you, because I see this, I could see this blossoming where we could have an event every other weekend that they'll want, you know, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm exaggerating, but no, we could have something every other weekend where people will want the city to provide continuous, you know, um, support for everything, and same as the coin drop. I could see it turning into that, so maybe we do need a policy on the number of events. Because-
Well, you know my concern about profit versus nonprofits. But for those that are for-profit, you could always have a scale where first year you pay X amount of percentage. Next year, if it's a successful event, and they come back, you can raise that percentage.
I agree, that's a great-
That's a good way of doing that too.
What we don't want is to continue going forward and closing our eyes to what this looks like and being naive to the impact on our existing budget, especially when the recreation department's being called to the carpet or maintenance projects that are getting neglected because we're spending our time doing other things. So that is really the purpose of this. And, and I also want to say that there are several groups that come in and pay these fees without even considering asking for a waiver, because they see the rate ahead of time. They know, and they have for all along have done that. Um, but there are some groups that don't, they don't.
I just want to add that, um, it's not only to, uh, be clear about where you're spending your time, it's to be clear and transparent in what these events actually cost. It's accountability, and nobody likes accountability. So this is the harsh reality of, of how these events impact, um, our resources and our budget.
Yeah.
Okay. We have representation from the different groups here. I believe we've got the Farm to School folks are here. The NEK Awareness folks are here. Do we have anyone from the Major?
Yes, Court, Court, Curtis, and some people.
Mr. Curtis is for that one. We have Phil for Kingdom Games. So we do have representation from all the groups here, um.
And the first few are going to be tough because we don't have that policy in place. Um, but that is totally up to the council. If you, you know, maybe that's something to consider as these requests are coming in, that they have had all of these things waived and the fact that this is new to them. And maybe for the first year, they get a free pass, but they should know then that this is what their fees look like going into the future.
But looking at this, because the Memorial Day, we've had that parade for even over fifty years. Probably been a hundred years since they had that. Farm to School, they've had the block party for a few years now. I think it started over here, and then they moved to Gardner Park. Um, the NEK Awareness, that's a new one. The Major was done last year, and so this is the second year for that one. Kingdom Games, this is the fourth or fifth?
The ninth year of the-
Wait, how many year?
It's the ninth year of-
Ninth year of Kingdom Games.
No, it's the fourth of the Kingdom Games, but the ninth year of the sprint.
Right, that's on, okay. So I'm just getting a little history of some of the organizations, and so, okay.
And I have some numbers here, um, you know, my initial thoughts on, you know, work-based reductions. Because obviously, someone that rents a certain amount of field space for a softball field that requires mining and things like that, if they're doing the twenty-minute Memorial Day celebration in Gardner Park, the impact is going to be very little on trash cans, bathrooms, things like that. So there are, there's a little bit of legal room in there if we want to get into picking apart our fees that we have accrued. Or, so, I'll leave that to you guys.
Does council, what I would do is probably, we want to hear from each group. Would be probably just a little-
Well, you've already heard from Jim, so you might be-
We've heard from Jim, so-
He might be ready to make a decision on that one.
He'll be ready, do you want to make a decision on each one? Or do you want to do a, how does council wish to proceed on this? I know it's a sticky wicket, but do we want to hear from each group?
I myself don't need to.
You don't need to?
But I think if we go forward as a council, just as suggested this first year, as we changing everything over, we feel past people, but we as a council need to sit down somewhere at some time on, on here and determine, are we going to go route these like we did with the coin drops? You can only have so many for summer. You can have extra if you want them, but we're not going to waiver anything for you.
But then what if the Jazz Fest came in and we said, oh, sorry, too late, you have to pay your whole fee, and we're not going to give you five thousand dollars? I think setting a, a cap of how many is probably not the widest way to go.
So that could be something you guys determine, but maybe for the purposes of tonight and for this first go, we wait until council's a little bit more prepared to, to put a number on these guys? And maybe I'm oversetting the bounds, so it's totally up to you guys, but.
Mr. Chanel, do you have something?
Okay, if you want to take a for-profit, say the first year, you start with twenty percent charge. This is what it would be, based on that.
For that one.
Right. Say the next year, you go up to forty percent, sixty, eighty, and then on your fifth year, obviously, this is going to be a, a yearly thing. They're obviously doing a good job. Then you could start being a hundred percent, because they've, they've got staying power. But it's going to be up to the council. If you want to go ahead and waive for the first year like Jess suggests, and then go with that fee structure, you're going to have your nonprofits and then your profits, and then go with that percentage.
I know a lot-
So it seems fair in this case.
Yeah, well, last year, we waived the Kingdom Games. We waived the fees except for the police department. This fee does not include the police department, correct?
Right, that's a separate contract.
You had, as we waived, I think we waived the fees for Kingdom Games last year, except for the police department because it was the weekend labor and the police boat.
Well, you may want to take a moment to hear from these groups too, because I'm not, I'm not positive that they're asking for everything off. I think Phil, for example, had a proposal to make, to give the recreation department, for the city, a cut for one of the events that he was doing, so, you know.
All right, well, I, I think we ought to hear from the different groups.
Yeah, we should.
You know, they're here, we ask them to come.
Mm-hmm.
So we've heard from Jim.
So we're going to vote for Jim, and then who are the next one?
I think we should do it anyway. So what is the council's pleasure with the Memorial Day Parade?
Oh, you have a proposal? Did you have a proposal?
Say again?
Did you have a proposal for the Memorial Day Parade?
Yeah, I make a proposal that we waive the entire one thousand one hundred ninety dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to waive the fee for the Memorial Day Parade. Any discussion on that? And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Yep.
Okay, the next group is the Green Mountain Farm to School Block Party.
Hi.
This is Shane.
My name's Shane. I am the Communications and Development Coordinator for Green Mountain Farm to School. Uh, first and foremost, Jess, God bless you for dealing with all of this. Um, so I'm here to talk about the block party, the Summer Block Party. We've been holding it for the past three years. It's a free, community-wide event held in Gardner Park. Uh, it is an afternoon of fun, games, activities. Um, and most importantly, it's an afternoon where we serve free lunches to the community's children. Last year, we served over a hundred and seventy-five lunches on this day alone. Um, now, while over this past three years, we have not only drawn out hundreds of people to Gardner Park to enjoy the free public park, um, we have organizations that are clamoring to participate in the event. They're calling to us, they're looking forward to actually setting up and being able to interact with Newport in this capacity. And importantly for us, it's one of our best opportunities to get the word about, about our Lunchbox Food, Summer, Summer Food Service program. Um, you know, since two thousand and fourteen, when we started the Lunchbox, uh, we have increased each year the number of children that we've been able to serve free summer meals to, um, cultivating in over fifteen hundred meals served last year. And we aim to continue that trend. Um, and we know that our partnership with the city of Newport and the Newport Parks and Recreation Department is really integral to engaging a large part of the community while also increasing participation in the program over the Summer Food Services. Um, finally, in request of having all the fees waived for this event, uh, we are wanting to work with the Newport Parks and Rec Department in incorporating the logo and considering as a full partner in the event. Uh, we put posters throughout the communities. Um, every single school child goes home with a postcard about it, which would feature the Newport Parks and Rec logo. There are two large banners, uh, Newport and Derby on each side of East Main Street. All our social media that we use to promote the event will feature the Newport Parks and Rec logo. Um, and any advertisements that we take out in the local newspaper will as well. Um, in addition to this, uh, as the communications professional, I can assure you that, uh, it'll also be mentioned as a full partner in all the press releases that go out to all the local newspapers. Um, and it will also be prominently featured on our website. So, uh, as a nonprofit and someone who, uh, personally which really cares about this program, and I hope the community feels the same way as well, uh, we hope to be able to work with the city of Newport and the Newport Parks and Recreation Department to see the Summer Block Party come back in full swing for sure. Um, as always, you're always invited to the Summer Block Party. And if you guys have any questions about the Lunchbox or just the Summer Block Party in general, I'm open to answering any of those.
Yes. Um, I think-
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Dennis. I thought you did, oh, you said no, oh, okay, I thought, yeah, go ahead.
I think out of the applications, this one for the block parade is the only one that says there's a non-refundable twenty-five dollar reservation deposit.
So these guys, this, um, in the, in our field use application here, it requires a twenty-five dollar deposit, which then gets pulled off of the fees that you would be paying. So if somebody rents a ball field for thirty-seven fifty, they have to pay in order to even put this in and let us consider their application and get them on the calendar, they have to commit with the twenty-five dollar deposit. Standard procedure, same thing as if you were to rent a campsite and a campground. It says some skin in the game, but it still gets applied towards their fee. So it's really just a prepayment on what they would be owing. So these guys, unlike some of the other groups, actually submitted that twenty-five dollar deposit without question with their application, which is nice because you can see that they're putting some skin in the game a little bit. So what you're seeing on there is the, the fact that they paid that. So if there's a negative one next to that, it's actually a deduction. So if there's a negative one next to that, it's actually a deduction. So it's just an invoicing procedure to show that they'd need a payment on that. This was probably one of the first ones that I did, so it doesn't include the check number and the details on there. I got a little bit better at it as I went. But that's the only reason there on there is because they did, they did put that skin in the game.
So if the veterans had done that on their application, it would say the same thing?
Yep.
Okay.
We're more than willing to forego that.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Bradley.
I'll make a motion to waive the entire fee for Green Mountain Farm to School Block Party.
So a motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motions?
I will recuse myself because of conflict of interest. Since we are a partner, my church is a partner organization, and that's my wife lying over there.
Yeah. Okay. Then, motion been made and seconded, then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
You can have my extension.
And what extension?
I got you down already.
Thank you.
So, is it Tara?
Just a second. Yes. Tara, Tara Patton, with the NEK Awareness Memorial Walk.
Yep, so this is Michelle, and my name is Tara, and we're part of the NEK Sam Strong. And this will be the first overdose awareness memorial walk in the state of Vermont. We're gonna put on June twenty-fourth at the gazebo, so we're asking to waive that fee. This is a grassroots organization. We're trying to become nonprofit. We are selling T-shirts there, and any of that profit is gonna be funneled into Journey to Recovery, which is a nonprofit organization. So it's Saturday from one to four at the gazebo, and we'd be walking across the causeway, up the sidewalk to the library, down to the waterfront and back. And then there'll be some speakers at the gazebo.
Okay, questions?
I have a question. I know when we do the suicide awareness, one in September is a rule. And you're going across some of the main thoroughfares. I believe we have something to keep it safe when they cross the street.
Okay, sir, we've been in contact with, with Sarah, Chris.
Oh, okay, so you do already have a...
Yeah, thank you. And Sarah, I'm the moderator, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this? Go ahead, Ms. Chenet.
Tara, are you located, do you have an office here in Newport or is it just up in Derby?
I, I'm a grassroots organization. I, I run a hotel at the Derby Four Seasons. I don't, I don't have an office.
That's kind of what I was talking about. Some don't have an organization down, rather than they're just a mom and pop or someone that's kind of coming in to just do a, do something that's important to them and setting around the community.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
But it's also associated with the not-for-profit Journey to Recovery Center, which is in Newport.
Right, in Malchamp, yes.
That's what they'll be raising money for. So they're, they're not housed under that organization, but it sounds like that's what you're...
It's being funneled under, yes, in Malchamp.
And there's the hope to become, and if this was repeated, it would be as a nonprofit in association with that other nonprofit.
Exactly.
With that, with that nonprofit there, okay. That answers a lot of my questions, because being associated with that, I was just curious, okay? Yeah?
Mr. Mayor, if we're at that stage, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we consider this an application as if it were a nonprofit and waive all the fees for the NEK Awareness Memorial Walk.
So a motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded. Any other discussion on that motion?
I need to abstain, I have a couple of conflicts.
Okay. Then, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Three ayes and one abstention.
Mr. Mayor, what was the fee that you waived in this case?
One hundred and fifty dollars.
No, that was a thirty dollar damage deposit, so one hundred and twenty.
One hundred and twenty.
I approve that, I'm a member of the club.
Oh, well, it's okay. Okay, the next one is the Major Family Five K, and we have Mr. Curtis, who's representing the Major Family.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My wife and daughter established the Major Family Foundation a couple of years ago. It is a five-oh-one, C-three corporation. Just to give you, it happened once last year. The event starts near the gate of Crowdy Beach, goes to, I'm not sure how many feet, but past the gateway and they return back to Crowdy Beach. Last year, they hired CERT, who, all members of CERT donated their time. They did purchase insurance through the city and paid that fee. Just to give you an example, last year, they raised about eleven hundred dollars, which goes directly to the Mary E. Wright Halo Foundation. And so with the cost that you see of seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, recommended reduction of one sixty, five hundred and seventy-six twenty-five as a fee, kind of diminishes the interest in having the event. And so I am asking for a full waiver of the fees.
Okay, any questions from everyone in the council? Then we need a motion to basically approve the event or waive, either waive the fees and approve the event or approve the event with fees.
I'll make a motion that we approve the event and waive the fees.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, discussion on that. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
The next one is Kingdom Games. I've seen you misplace that.
I mean, that's what I'm...
My name is Phil White, and I'm home Kingdom Games. It's described as, I describe it as a small business that pays taxes. It is a, committed to donating our profits on a model of Newman's Own. So if and when we make profits, we're committed to donating them. There's several reasons why I'm organized as a business, looking for capital investment and things like that. But I'm proud of the work that we do. Over the years, we've drawn thousands of people to this area to participate in, in events coming from probably as many as forty different states, Ireland, Scotland, England, five Canadian provinces. They, we like to put on a robust event, which means that we invest a lot into making it a fun event for them to come. We used to have a parade, as you may recall. Last year, the city wanted a thousand dollars for the parade, and so we didn't have it. And so I think that as you look at the impact of charging fees, I think that you, I hope that you will look at the positive benefit to the community as well as whether it makes certain events feasible or not. I'm not complaining about the lack of parade, but I can tell you that the swimmers and the kayakers loved it. It was the only parade that I know of for an open water swimming event, and it helped us get international recognition. I understand the desire and even the need for obtaining some reimbursement when individuals or organizations ask for services that are not otherwise covered. And I really do understand that. But I also hope that as the council is looking at a hole in the Main Street, stores closing for whatever reason, that when somebody like me devotes whatever years I have left in my life to organizing these crazy events for the good of the community, that you will consider that as well. And I hope that as you're looking at the budgeting for this, I understand the commitment to maintaining the infrastructure of the city, and I think that that was probably a wise move. But in the past, the city has served as a partner for a lot of events. I viewed the city's participation in Kingdom Swim as part of a partnership with the city, with the Chamber of Commerce. We had Aquafest around it. One year, we had three or four days of Aquafest. There was a celebration going on that put Newport on the map and showed it in its best light. So I'm trying to get a handle on Newport Parks and Recreation not being a partner. For example, with the Santa Parade. I don't know whether you're gonna charge for the Santa Parade or not, but I've always looked at us trying to do the Santa Parade and the Santa Run in a way that ties into what the city is doing with the Santa Workshop, so that it maximizes with the synergy of it. So I'm shifting here. I always thought of Newport as the partner in Kingdom Swim, because I think it served the community well, and a lot of businesses benefited. So what I would propose this year is on our fees, and some of those, the fees that you have before you are doubled up. So for example, the pavilion, you'll see two bills, one for the daytime event and one for the nighttime event. And I think that obviously, that's because I have two applications, which I wanna explain in a minute. But obviously, I don't think you should be looking at charging me for two days for the pavilion or for some tents that remain standing when it's for the entire day. It may start at five o'clock in the morning and go till nine o'clock at night. But I would propose paying five hundred dollars this year as we shift from one format to another. I'm happy to pay that because I appreciate the fact that it's hard work doing what the city does. I can't say that I budgeted anything into it for this year's swim. I'll know better next year, and I think next year, when I'll come early, like in August, before I do planning, before I do fee structures, before I even decide what stuff we can do or not do. This Saturday night at Aquaf, at Kingdom Swim, we're trying something different. As you may remember, the Chamber of Commerce used to do at least a Saturday and a Saturday night dance and dinner on Main Street. They're not doing that anymore. And in the past, I was happy to send swimmers over to that Saturday night celebration. We'll have probably three hundred swimmers and kayakers and another hundred or two hundred friends and family coming to this event this year. When that event stopped happening, I thought, well, let's see if we can do something on the beach. So last year, we had a pig roast. I bought a pig from Bros. Deena prepared the fixings. A few stayed around to help boil the corn and serve it up. And it was a pretty informal event. We had a band, a small band. And we had Kingdom Brewing come down with a small beer tent. This year, we thought, in the absence of any other civic organization doing an event on Saturday as a part of the celebration of summer, I stepped up to take the risk of buying the pig, of paying for the band, and hoping that it doesn't rain. And so we're hoping to build a Saturday night Aquafest-like celebration. If anybody else wanted to do it, I'd be happy to give it to them. But nobody has stepped up to do that. So, and as you're looking at me as to whether I should be considered a nonprofit or for-profit, I'd like you to, to understand that I'm trying to fill a void with that Saturday night event. And I'm hopeful that we can, we're charging fifteen dollars for a pig roast, five dollars just to come in and listen to the band. So it's affordable, it's good entertainment, it'll be open to the folks at the Crowdy Campground, but it'll also be open to the public, and we'll advertise it and promote it. So anyway, that's what my request is, is that you charge me five hundred dollars, not counting what I'm giving to the police. And I would be happy with that for this first year.
Questions for Phil?
Yeah, I have one question on the, the pig roast. I know you do it at Crowdy Beach. The campers that are there, do, how much hassle was there last year when you have people wanting to go to bed at nine o'clock? What time does all the music stop?
Well, we shut down at nine.
Oh.
And the Bros, the Bros are camping there, so they're happy to have the pig roast. They come down and they, they do their work. And I think this year, we're gonna make a commitment to get the word out and really try to invite the public down. Because last year, we wanted to see whether it would work, whether it was manageable. But I think it could be a great event. And like I said, if anybody wants to step up and do it, I've invited them. And if the fire department wanted to do it, I'd be happy to have them do it to raise money for themselves. But so far, I haven't found anybody.
Other questions, comments?
This is strictly off the cuff, but I've been involved with the swim for, since the beginning, kayaking. And I tell you, the people that come to swim and their families love it here. And I get questions all the time, what's happening, what can we do? We love this area so much, we'll be back again. So I think, Phil, having the pig roast is a great idea, and I would hope that you support Phil, because he's great.
Anything else? Then we would need a motion. So you've offered to pay five hundred, you said, Phil?
Yes, I proposed it.
I'll make a motion to accept Phil's proposal to pay five hundred dollars in addition to whatever agreement he's made with the police department for his three events.
So a motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
Made and seconded, discussion? Yes, Chief?
I just need a little clarification. When you say the police department, Phil, I need clarification as to whether you're looking for just the police vote or you want the mobile command post and the dispatchers, yeah?
If we can talk about, I, I think probably just the police vote and the staffing for that.
Is that what you provided last year, eh, Chief? Yes, sir.
Okay, then a motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I'm gonna have to abstain since I also volunteer for Mr. White on a lot of his events.
Okay, so we have three ayes and one abstention. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Before you leave, I think we need to have the city manager or the rec department work on a recommendation for the city council for future events. Whether it's coming up with, whether you recommend we waive the fees forever and we just build it into the budget, which is already struggling, or we limit the number of events. Some communities do do that. You're absolutely right. I know some limit how many events they have that they will support as far as, you know, underwriting. I think you should have the task of coming up with something for the council with a recommendation for the future, so that we don't go through this whole thing. Because personally, it's, it is difficult. I mean, I, everyone here probably has different opinions on the different events. I agree with Julie, you're right, we, you know, depending on what it is. And my fear is it's gonna turn into like the coin drops. We're gonna have people wanna do an event every weekend and want the fees waived. Mr. Wilson remembers that very well. And we've had, and some people weren't happy when we came up with that, limiting the number of coin drops. But we had to, because it was gonna be more, we could've had one every weekend. And so that is the fear. And it's easy to, these events and these, all these events are great, and it's great that they're held in Newport, because it does benefit everything. But it also puts a stress on the city. And unlike the other communities around us, we have a much higher tax rate, but we also are a full-service city. We have the public works, the police, the rec department. And so I highly recommend that you come back at a future council meeting. Doesn't have to be right off, but come back within the next six months? Not six months, it might be too far out. Well, come back within like a couple of months with, with a recom, is that count, okay, the council, like a couple of months? Come back with what you would think we should do. Because I think it's very important, because I agree, you know, it's hard to pick and choose and, and, and... So that's what I have to say. I don't know if anyone else has anything to add to that, but Mr. Johnson's looking at me like, okay, shut up.
I ain't challenging.
I'm not saying a word.
No, I just wanted to say that, because I don't, I don't vote on any of this. I sit here unless, I only vote if there's a tie. I mean, I would've supported everything that the council went along with tonight, but I just think we need to make our life easier.
Yeah. I think, you know, certainly we don't mind doing the legwork to do that research, challenge accepted. But if you guys are partial and have certain things that you'd like to see in there, for example, the profit, nonprofit thing, I have Mr. Chenet's stuff here. So if there's anything else specific... So if there's anything else specific that you'd like to see in there?
Shoot the emails off or shoot the email off to city manager or Jess. Go ahead and talk to him if you think that there's something you'd like to see in it. Okay, great. Thank you, thank you everyone for coming. Sorry it took so long, but thank you. It was good to hear about your events. Thank you.
If you want to leave, feel free. You can stay if you want.
Thank you for shutting that curtain, that sun, I was seeing dogs. I haven't, yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to review Charter Article 27. Let the city manager, or...
So historically, the city has conducted their business with a belief that any sale of real estate belonging to the city over $1,000 or a lease exceeding one year, we need to go to a public vote. So they have conducted their business in that manner, which has actually been expensive and overly laborious. I've had a new opinion, which I've given a copy to the council members, for them to review. We have another option available to us. According to our city attorney, the way that the charter is written, which reads, "The city council may authorize the sale of real or personal estate belonging to the city and the same shall not exceed in value $1,000, or may lease the same for a term not exceeding one year, and all conveyances, grants, or leases of any such real estate shall be signed by the mayor and sealed with a city seal." Our attorney has written a finding and presented that to us that says, the wording of that particular statute falls back to Title 24, Section 106.1b, which allows the city to put the question of whether a property should be sold for a certain price to a public vote. The city could also convey real estate with a value in excess of $1,000 after posting and publishing a notice of sale of municipal real estate in accordance with Section 106.1a. Under that section, the city would post a notice of sale of municipal real estate containing the terms of the conveyances in at least three public places, one being near the clerk's office, one in the newspaper of general circulation in the city. The notice must be posted and published at least 30 days before the proposed conveyance. The notice contains a statement alerting the voters that if they object to the conveyance, they should submit a petition, signed by 5% of them, to the city objecting to the conveyance. Such a petition, if in the proper form and signed by 5% of voters, would then place the question on whether the conveyance should occur on the terms contained in the notice, on the ballot, at the next annual or special meeting. If no petition is submitted within 30 days after posting and publication of the notice, then the city may convey the property on the terms specified in the notice. And I forgot to include a copy of the sample notice, but we do have it. And the reason I want to bring this out on the record is because one example where this could have been to somebody's advantage was last year, we took Chris Johansson's request for a five-year lease to vote, where we didn't have to do that if we followed this, if we knew about this, we couldn't avoid that step. That would have made his life easier, and it, I mean, it did pass, so it was a good thing. We have another example tonight, which is our next agenda item, which is where Steve Rowe of Newport Natural Foods is interested in renewing his lease for a three-year term. If we follow this procedure, we do not need to bring that to a public vote. The other opportunity that we have is with a land sale with Newport Auto. They have requested to purchase a piece of property that's going through the title search procedure. A price has been agreed upon, as far as I'm aware, there's been no change in that. That's another example where if we follow the notice procedure, we do not need to bring that to a public vote. So I think it offers some conveniences, not only for the city, but also for the people who are coming to the city requesting opportunities. So I wanted to let you know that that's been out there. You need to do nothing. I'm not asking for a motion or anything. It's mostly awareness for you, as well as for the public, that I think that it's going to be more liberating for us to be able to conduct business.
That would have come in handy, Joe. And we had to sell that little piece of land to the state for the state office voting. Were you on the council?
No, I wasn't.
No, you went on there then. We, they, when they designed the state office voting, they found out they had to buy a piece of property from the city to meet the permitting process for the state and the city. Well, we ended up having to sell it for $999.99, because we thought the charter wouldn't allow us not going to a vote, which then would have delayed the project for several months. Really, the time we want to vote, have a special election. And so we sold it for $999.99. And so this, I think, will make it much easier, like in Steve's case, too. We have someone interested, you know, in the lease for the Gateway. But I think it's...
I think it's a positive. I think it's a good thing.
It ties in with what state statute allows.
Absolutely. It follows the statute.
It follows the statute, so I think, I think it's a good thing.
I do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There's just one thing about it that makes me a little uncomfortable, and that's the lack of competition. So for Newport Auto Body, I don't believe it was put on the market or anybody else had an opportunity to make a bid to buy that piece of property. And I assume with the Gateway rental, it's the same thing. So is there a way that we could put it out for anybody to have that access before making the deal with whoever's buying?
So Newport Auto Body came to us. That property wasn't for sale. We didn't put out a for-sale bid process for that. That was something, they came to us and the council approved that plan.
And we didn't even know we owned it. They had to research it.
And I'd be surprised if it's big enough to do anything with anyway.
It's really pretty sad.
The only person's worth anything to Newport Auto Body.
But we didn't even know we owned it, the city.
But what if somebody else really wanted it? Is that fair?
Well, it's probably, they're welcome to come and put in dead. I mean, we don't have a process...
They could approach the city in exactly what you're trying to do.
Right.
Exactly, so...
I mean, they approached us and...
Right. And we are demonstrating our pro-business philosophy by trying to engage them.
And by allowing them to purchase that property. I mean, the way they approached us is allowing them to expand their business, which is, and it's not only is it putting that little piece of property back on the tax rolls, which I don't even remember how it came to the city. I mean, no one seems to know exactly how it came to the city. But it also allows them to expand their business, which means that we improve the value of the property. And so that's the way I look at that aspect, for that one. Did you say, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so what we've got here from Cecil Page and Tucker was his readout on our thing. So does that mean we have to change our charter?
No.
Because that is, we played that crap for a long time.
No, you do not.
Sat here one o'clock one morning, parsing if and and.
You do not have to change your, you don't have to change Section 27. The interpretation is that it automatically resorts to Title 24, Section 106.1b.
See, there's some sections of state statute that actually supersede the charter. But then in the other way, the charter supersedes state statute. It's all on what the statute is. Yes?
Just because it begins to get onerous for citizens to put together 5% to get a petition going, and especially since, with respect to some of these contracts, a small group of people might be interested, but the rest of the population might care less. Maybe you could think about having some upper limits, like when a property, for instance, wherever you want to set the limits, but when a property is going to be sold for, let's say, a million dollars, maybe it should be approved by a vote of all citizens. I mean, maybe there's some limit you want to set. I think it should be probably below a million, but a limit so that some things still go to the voters automatically. Maybe if you're talking about a 100-year lease that you're going to set up, I mean, not for a three- or a five-year lease, or maybe not even for a 10-year lease, but maybe there's some limit where you'd say, well, but if the lease is for 20 or 30 years or 40 years or 50 years, that automatically goes on the ballot for the people to decide without them having to get a petition together to dispute it. So just think about whether or not you want to have some upper limits to this automatic process.
Could you check?
The law is already encompassing. I don't think we need to do that. And I wish we did have somebody interested in a property for a million dollars that we owned. Wouldn't that be fantastic? So I think the statute is already designed to work the way that it does.
Okay.
There is a piece of property that may very well end up falling into the city's hands that presumably would be worth more than a million dollars. My question is, can one council bind another council in that fashion?
That would be a question for the council?
No, I mean that as a legal question. I mean, can this council vote and say, this is the limit, and have another council be forced to obey that? Or would that be something...
Are you talking about C-O-U-N-C-I-L or C-E-L?
I am not talking about your attorney, because I don't care about your attorney. I'm just asking if the city council in its current membership can bind the next city council. And as far as I can tell, if you can vote something in, you can vote it out. I mean, am I wrong about that?
The next council can change the limit.
Exactly. One council cannot bind the other. We've already had that happen in the past, where a council came up with a ruling and a subsequent council changed it.
Mr. Mayor? I have no objection to Steve renting the Gateway for three years or my cousin Alan buying that piece of property. It's just a matter of...
Oh, it's your cousin?
Provying, yes.
Oh, that's right.
It's just, in the future, I think it's only fair to make sure that the whole public has the same opportunity as anybody else.
And we did have an open bid last year.
Right.
And the only reason I'm proposing three years is the investment of equipment to upgrade it, which I'll be taking on myself, whether it's new chairs, which are in bad repair, or, you know, refrigeration, things like that, which will benefit the city. I mean, anything that I improve physically in the building, I can't take with me legally in a lease. And so it's just, it's just a matter of knowing what I'll be able to recoup from it. If I only have a one-year lease, it's going to be very difficult for me to make, you know, I spent about $10,000 last year, but it would see me easily spending much more than that if I had a commitment to that.
Any other questions on the charter aspect, from anyone? Okay. Since we have a good segue into the Gateway lease, we have that before us here. I think you all had it. You sent a copy to the council? Yes, okay. Laura sat down with Steve. I was here for that, part of it. And we worked out the lease agreement. There were some changes made from the original lease. Steve has reviewed it, and you're okay with, he went line by line through this lease. And basically, it does, it would be for three years. And I can tell you, as far as the snack bar goes, it became a very popular place down on the waterfront. People were really going to it. And it was the first year in many years that it was actually open consistent hours. So it's nice that Steve has come forward and said he wants more than a one-year, knowing that. Because that's been one struggle the council's had, has been with the snack bar aspect of the whole operation, and also leasing out the Gateway, you know, weekend events. I know you've already got people inquiring.
I had seven events this last week. And then, in addition to that, I had offered the city the space at no charge for rec department events. And Kingdom Swim didn't, they didn't pay for the building, even though I had, I could have charged them. I've donated the space to as many nonprofits as I could without hurting myself too badly. So, you know, I think that part of the bargain, I think I more than kept up than I said I would from the year before.
And is I still on there for three years?
Yes, for six events a year for the city. And I have been giving most nonprofits a discount on everything that, you know, that they come in with. I just did it with the United Way on Friday.
The Rotary still has access to use it?
The Rotary is getting the bargain of the century.
Okay, questions, Mr. Chenix? Yes, so Steve, you're renting the entire building, right?
For the kitchen, where Chris has rights to the upstairs kitchen. But I am renting the entire building and operating it.
So he's only got rights to the kitchen upstairs?
The upstairs kitchen.
Not the remainder of the floor?
Correct.
That's yours?
And that, that access is just for the summer months?
Thank you. Other questions? Then what is the wish of the council? We wish to approve the three-year lease and authorize myself and to sign it on behalf of the city. So, I was just looking for a motion, if anyone, for any objections. You know, I'm just looking to see if anyone wants to make a motion. So you've made the motion, is there a second? Okay, I'm just...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second the motion.
Okay, I have been looking for it. Okay, then a motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? And all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. We'll sign it here. We have Mr. Johnson can be the notary? Yes, we're going to make you do something?
I'm also a notary, future.
I am too, but I can't, really can't notarize on my own.
And we're going to have free jazz on the dock every Sunday this summer. You don't have to buy anything. You can buy a hot dog if you want, but you don't have to. It'll be free to the public every week. And we're going to be collaborating with Belvedere also on Wednesday night to have some music, live music. And I had already agreed that I would let, if the space wasn't booked, that if it was a rainy event, they could still have the event inside the building. So it's going to benefit everybody. It's going to be free to the public, a lot of the events we do. So it's not just for tourists, it's not just for profit, it's for the community to enjoy.
Very good. Thank you. I think everything's okay there?
So, I deserve a copy, it's good.
I mean, free to the public, no charge, you can come visit. It'll be a variety of...
I'll bring this, I'll bring a copy over to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stash. You can go.
Thank you, everybody. It's warm in here.
Okay. Next item is the letter of support for the Mephisto Magog Watershed Association grant application. Laura?
Yeah, that's me.
Oh, you're representing the MWA?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I have the original.
Yes, so...
So the mayor can, well, you probably want to talk about that.
Do you want to just give a little background on it?
Yeah, so my name's Kendall Lambert. I'm on the board of the Mephisto Magog Watershed Association. For those of you who don't know, we are a nonprofit that was founded in 2007. Our mission is to promote awareness of the Mephisto Magog watershed and also protect the ecological uniqueness of our watershed. We had asked for a letter of support from the city of Newport for a grant that we are applying for, from the High Meadows Fund. This grant would allow us to work to create a... This grant would allow us to work to create a storm water collaborative. So we would be working in the Upper Clyde area of the watershed with our municipal partners, with associations, the lake associations, and the other groups in the area, to develop a strategic plan to address storm water projects in the area to help the watershed meet the ACT 64 requirements and the TMDL, the total daily maximum load requirements for the watershed. So the letter of support is just that the city of Newport, along with other municipalities in the area, support our endeavors and in applying for this grant, there's no financial requirement, and that we can work together in the future if this grant is, well, we will work together in the future anyway, but specifically with this grant, much funding.
And you're getting letters of support from Derby and the surrounding, around the lake and beyond that?
Yes, we're from, what's the, Newport, Derby, Charleston, Morgan, and Brighton. So all of that, those cities within the Clyde River watershed.
And just a little background, as we all know, there's an EPA mandate, ACT 64, for the TMDLs. And I forget, I can't remember what Ben Copeland said on the funding of the day, that we have to reduce the MFAGog by...
It's the phosphorus loading.
It's the phosphorus, but the city is really only like 1% of the, we're only 1% of the issue, of the TMDL issue in the lake compared to...
There's a lot more of that in the, of the effect, however.
What? There's a lot more feeding to the TMDL, but we're only like, we're only like 1% of the, of the problem.
Of the problem, yeah.
Of the problem. If you look at the graph, it was amazing.
Right.
And I know that was the big thing with the legislation that we had to convince, even the, we got to convince the EPA that it's not just municipalities, it's the whole watershed. And so, and this basically is just creating this storm water collaborative to come up with solutions, because we know eventually there's going to be mandated, you're going to have to redo, we've got two CSOs, right, Laura, that we may have to change in the future. And right now, the funding isn't there, no matter what the state, they really are not funding it the way it's going to have to be, based upon the ruling. But this is a start to try to come up with a plan for the future and to see what we need to work on. There's nothing being mandated into the city as far as this grant. We're not going to come in and say, now you've got to spend twenty million dollars on this aspect and that.
Mr. Mayor, what is the size of the grant being requested?
So the, the High Meadows Fund grant is one part of the project, and that specific, I believe it's going to be forty thousand for the Watershed Association, but the grant proposal is not, it's submitted yet.
Do you know that? Yes, you do. Oh, I mean, should we, should I have a vote on that? Just, we need a motion. I have signed the original for them to take tonight on the chance that the council supported it. I'm just trying to be proactive. So if there is no opposition, or, I mean, people who wish to make a motion to approve it, because there is nothing that obligates the city. And Tom has already been working with them. He's attended a seminar, the Lake Share, over at, over at Echo Center, I think they had a seminar.
Yeah, he came to the Lakey Summit.
The Lakey Summit, on it.
Yep.
And so we have already started working with them.
Didn't you characterize it that we're way further ahead than everyone else at the Lakey Summit? But that's...
Yes, just the way we're already working together, a lot of the groups, we are, we are, in our collaboration, we're farther along.
So just, just to bagger on drum a little bit.
So...
Mr. Mayor, then I'll make a motion that we go ahead and present this letter, letter of support, even, whether or not...
Okay, a motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye. Ayes opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Now you can...
Thank you.
The next one was the application to Northern Borders on behalf of the Tasting Center. Now, I've got Karen Garrity here to explain this. This letter actually was sent, but we can withdraw it. We just had to do a letter of intent, but I'm going to let Karen kind of explain a little bit, because it's kind of an interesting way of helping a business.
Yeah, so the Northern Borders Regional Commission provides grants for infrastructure development, and the Tasting Center requires really a loading dock, increased loading dock capacity. The businesses in there are doing a lot more business, they're shipping in and out and so forth. So as a business, they can't apply for this grant, it's a for-profit business, but the city can apply on behalf of this, and I should say, the grant is an eighty, twenty percent. So it's an eighty percent is covered, the cost of the grant is covered by the grant, twenty percent is covered as a, the business covers that. So if we were looking, for example, we priced out some of the loading docks, say twenty-two thousand dollars, the grant application would be around seventeen-five, and then the match would be, you know, forty-five hundred from the business.
With Eleanor, the Tasting Center pays.
The Tasting Center would pay. And so if the city applied, the requirement of the grant requires that the infrastructure is owned by the applicant. So the city would actually own the loading dock, but lease it to the business. And then lease it for a period of seven to ten years, until there's a full depreciation of the structure. And then it goes to the business. So that's essentially how it can be structured to work, to help support business development. So the obligation on the city's part is the grant application, and, but the matching funds come from the business. And then it can be, you can use the funds that you get from the lease to set up a smaller revolving loan fund, if you want, or it can be a revenue stream, or you want to set up that relationship with the business. But that's one way that, that we can acquire some of these infrastructure pieces for business, is having the city involvement.
Karen, is that similar to what Big and Shovel did for their elevator to take the end?
So that particular application was done through the downtown organization, so that was an infrastructure, they received tax credits for that infrastructure upgrade. So it was a different program, but a similar, similar type of support for business development.
We signed on, we signed the grant to do the, we powered the planning grant, we leased it to the Tasting Center.
Yes.
The city applied for that money, but it was for the Tasting Center's plan.
To do the feasibility studies, exactly.
Right, feasibility.
Yep.
Did you have something, Derek?
Yeah, I'm just curious how much you would lease a loading dock for. I mean, just in case I'm ever in the market.
Good question.
Good question.
Yeah. So that's, well, it'll depend on, we'll look at which loading docks make sense for that back area, and then we would work out the fee structure based on that.
Is the attempt to recoup the entire cost of the loading dock over that period, or...
Well, the, the cost of the loading dock, so that eighty percent is covered by the grant, twenty percent by the business. And so in essence, you know, how you set up that fee structure is going to be up to the council, and whether you want it to be set up as a, as a revenue stream or revolving loan fund. But you would want to be covering things like your liability, because you're going to be the owner of that structure until it's fully depreciated and then goes to the business.
But I think it's, it's a good way to help a business. It's a unique way. It's the first time something like this has come to the council, that, that I can think of, where we're actually able to apply, because, yeah, you're right, with the open borders, businesses can't apply for the open borders.
No.
But this is a unique opportunity that allows the city to help a business that needs to grow.
Yeah.
It's like the downtown tax program, but it's different, but it's like it.
But it's like, exactly.
You know, they can get the tax credits, but we're helping them.
Yeah. And I can say that Eden Ice Sider, I mean, as many of you know, they are expanding, they're expanded, I think, to twenty-four states in the country. They have other facilities in three or four other states. I mean, so in terms of shipping and in terms of that type of need for loading dock, and that's just the Eden Ice Sider, so you've got the other businesses that are in there as well. So it makes a lot of sense to have that facility.
Go ahead, and then Chief had something, right after?
Okay. Karen, they haven't come up with any plans yet as to where they want to locate the speeding dock?
No, but we've had, we've had an engineer look at it to, to make some suggestions about where that would go.
It would be in the back of the building.
It would be in the back, it would be on Seymour Lane, yeah.
Because right now, the big truck, right now, the trucks back up that, the backup Seymour Lane.
Right.
Because they're too big to drive around, so they, I see them, they drive into the municipal building, and then they back up the street.
And that's information that we could, we could certainly pass along. That grant is due June 2nd, so it's due in a couple of weeks, but we could get some of those preliminary questions answered.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chief, did you have something?
Mr. Shenet kind of addressed my question. I just wondered if there was room for traffic infrastructure upgrades. I mean, I'm all for the idea of the loading dock, it's going to really release the burden, partially here on Field Ave. I'm just mildly concerned about tractor-trailers backing up a one-way street.
Yeah.
But I love the idea of the loading dock for that business.
So I'll get that information, and I can send it out, because I know Dave Snidderger's had, had pre-engineering, some pre-engineering looks at it to see where it would best fit. So, great.
So, we will, even though it's been sent in, we do need a motion, because if we don't have it approved, we have to withdraw the application.
Yeah, actually, that's just the letter of intent, so the application hasn't gone in yet. The letter doesn't oblige you to anything, so if you decide not to do it, we don't have to...
That's what I was getting at, we need a motion to approve, go ahead with the application, that's what.
And I can, if you want to, you know, approve a contingent on looking at some of the plans, you know, we can do that too. And then, you know, the application's not due till the second.
I know Eleanor, I spoke with her, and they've got no problem doing the patch at all.
Right.
She's thrilled that we're doing this for their business to help with.
It's great to be able to keep this in downtown Newport. It's really helpful.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Shenet.
Question for you. Is this one of the regional grants where Mr. Welts said these may be being cut here in the future?
Great question. The Northern Borders Regional Commission...
You mentioned that.
Yes, is on the chopping block, but not for this round of funding. So this would be, this would be...
It's my understanding that in the, in the supplemental budget that they just passed, Northern Borders was saved and CDBG was saved.
Yes, and so was USDA.
And USDA.
Yeah.
They were saved, they weren't cut from the, is it the one-year?
Yep.
Is it one-year budget supplement?
Oh, it is a one-year supplement.
No, supplement that they passed, and those three were saved.
To keep the government running till...
To keep the government running for a year, till when, to September, or till whenever. They did, they kept Northern Borders in it, and they kept the CDBG and USDA. They were not cut.
Because I thought I'd heard that, I read that.
You're exactly right.
That's all I had.
Yeah, they were going to cut, and they've kept them for now.
It's the smallest, it's the smallest special agency in the country, so it's an easy target. You've got two employees.
Okay, thank you.
So, go ahead.
Are you set for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, then in that case, I will make a motion that we go ahead and provide this letter to be sent to the Northern Border Regional Commission on behalf of the Tasting Center, and that's it.
Can I just correct, say not letter, but approve the application?
Approve the application.
Oh, yes, approve the application.
Thank you. So a motion for made, is there a second?
Can I second and add that we look forward to working with you guys?
So a motion made and seconded, then any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
The next one is the renewal of our railroad easements. And these are the easements, where are they actually? Oh, the railroad tracks in Railroad Square. We've had easement since the railroad pretty much was built in the eighteen hundreds, and we, we have to pay for the infrastructure that goes under the railroad tracks.
This is also for the bike path.
The bike path.
The bike path easement. So these come out of our bike path easement line item. And you have a license agreement, and you have a lease agreement. The lease agreement is for the Glen Road Sewer Station? I'm sorry, I start to get tired, and then I lose it. At mile post fifty-nine. And that allows that lease with a price at the bottom, two thousand one hundred and nine dollars. So in your warrants tonight, that check has been made out. And the license agreement is in the amount of three hundred and, three thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And that encompasses retroactive January first, two thousand fifteen, until December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. This is standard operating procedure, and I would ask the board to make a motion to approve these.
And these figures are...
They've been vetted.
And they were lower than what they originally were?
They were lower. Our attorney did very good work, and saved us about four thousand dollars on what they originally proposed.
Because we have to remember, the railroad now is owned by a hedge fund, and they approached a local business and quadrupled the rates.
I was, I was very pleased with the work.
And so that business is working with them to get a proper contract. Go ahead.
So is that why these are retroactive back to January first of two thousand fifteen?
In part because there was a change in the company, the ownership of the company.
Yeah.
That's the main reason. So we've been working with Central Maine of Quebec since, well, John was working with them, and I continue to work with them.
And you weren't getting any, and I believe John wasn't getting a response. It took you quite a while to get a response from the actual company.
We seem to have a good working rhythm now.
Yeah.
So these have been on deck for quite some time, I think since November. And we got the go-ahead to sign, to approve them. They've been approved by our attorney.
Where on this patch of land is our pump locator?
Where is our what?
The pump locator on this patch of land. It doesn't show on the diagram.
Mile marker, mile post fifty-nine. If, I, I would assume that it's right where it says mile marker, mile post fifty-nine. It's got a little line there, that center line of track.
That's now where we're, that's where they're leasing.
The person living on twenty feet wide and seventy feet long at mile post fifty-nine.
It's up here.
Yeah, a hundred and sixty miles away, a hundred and sixty feet away from the center of the track.
So is the pump station in that section of land, or no?
That was the super tunnel.
Okay. So...
Right here, that pump station's right next to the road, isn't it, right here?
It doesn't show.
Well, it's presumably inside the fence, which is what's outlined there.
Yeah.
Which just doesn't say.
Right, it doesn't. Then it goes on to say in the number five, construction on leased premises. It does mention that the pump station is on the leased premises, but then over on section seven, paragraph C, it says that the LSE is the one who will be in charge of maintaining any structures thereon. So does that mean that the railroad pays for the upkeep of that pump, station?
I think it's intended that the city isn't planning on making any changes there. At C, the LSE, which is the city, excuse me.
We got the lessor.
Read the opening paragraph. The LSE is the city of Newport.
And the lessor, we should pay the lessor.
The lessor is central...
Wait a minute. They are the lessor, because they are leasing it to us. We are the LSE.
So I think that we are under obligation to keep that clean and maintained.
Okay.
But I still don't see where they're showing that we do have a pump station here. It would be kind of nice to know that.
No, it's, it's going to be by penny lane, in the, in the pull-off, just before you turn into the door, eight commodities, there's a pull-off. Got the pump station right in front of the pull-off, right by the whips.
Jamie, could you come up here, please, and just show on this map? Because this is the, this is the space that's being leased.
This is Glen Road. This would be your pull-off. Here, and then like up here, you have the turn, the big commodities in the back side of the center. And over here is the old chamber.
Chamber of Bursts, right there.
Yeah, and right across from there. It sits over in this corner here.
This upper corner up here?
Yeah, kind of toward the back.
Towards the back?
Yeah.
Okay, so over here.
Yeah. So if you pull into the pull-off, it's going to be on the right-hand side, as you're pulling in.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay?
I'm happy.
Okay, so do we need any other questions that we would need a motion to authorize me to sign the license agreement and also the lease agreement?
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
I will second.
Made and seconded, any other discussion on this? Then hearing that, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Johnson, you all have to be a witness again.
You are awake.
Just relax.
Thursday fifteenth. If I have it correct.
Give that to you, that one. All right. Moving on, new business, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Wilson. New business?
Actually, yes, I apologize for bringing anything up at this late hour, but as you've probably gathered in, kind of a stickler for parody and details and policy and procedure. And remembering back some months ago when there was an issue about creating a no-left-turn sign out of our municipal building parking lot, and that was a big discussion at council, I've noticed that recently there appeared a no-left-turn sign out of the state building parking lot. And as Mr. Wilson said about people coming up to him and not knowing what's going on, I work in the state building and my window looks over the, the entrance exit with the light, which is really a problematic section with people backing out and waiting at the light and blocking people in. And I'm wondering if there was any kind of a traffic study done to make that decision to make the no-left-turn on the exit without the light? And if that perhaps should have been a council decision to put up that sign?
When it comes to public safety, we defer into the chief of police. And I know years ago, we had requested, or we had kind of requested from chief to get a no-left-turn there, because there had been accidents, but it never got put up.
And also, that's state property, not city property.
But, but the roads are under the chief of police's control.
Right, so we, as a council, wouldn't have anything to cite on that. It would be between the chief and the state office.
Though when it comes to public safety, we defer to the chief of police.
Right, but in this case, since it's not even our property, this was.
Right, I'm going to let the chief.
I could contact buildings and grounds and talk with them as well, to let them know what was happening.
There's been numerous accidents there. But no, we usually defer to the chief when it comes to public safety issues.
Is there ever traffic study things being done at N D D A before making a decision like that? Is that something?
N D D A is coming down. We have a meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-ninth, we meet with Doug Morton from N D D A to finalize the traffic study for Field Ave. The intersection of Central, excuse me, the intersection of Coventry and Main Street and Railroad Square. And I'm hopeful that we can include the entrance to Gardner Park in that, but that's N D D A's telling us what the scope is.
But we've had a lot of traffic studies done.
Yes.
But that, how many accidents have been there?
Over the course of time, I, I tried to get some research. I know at least a dozen that have happened there, and the most recent one was a fairly serious one, so all of the issues seem to be from left-hand turns.
And there's been a lot in near misses. I was, I was almost broad-eyed pulling out. Somebody was letting me out, I started to come and another car that you can't see came whizzing by, and it was only by a hair that I stopped. But, so those are the near misses you don't hear about.
Anything else? I don't have anything to do. Mr. Schenectady?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You have a letter here to the Vermont Economic Progress Council?
Uh, yes.
Regarding a new business?
Oh, yes.
And where would they be looking?
This is, I was asked to write a letter of support for Soyah Canfrelia. It's a Canadian company and they're applying for a Vermont Employment Pro incentive grant, veggie grant. And the, they've been looking at Newport for about a year.
Little over a year.
Little over a year. They're a Canadian soy processing company. And they are looking at the former Numia.
The Numia Building.
The Numia Building.
That would fit them the best.
Yes, because they like the idea that, originally, I know the way, the way it was presented was they would bring their product in by rail and then it would go out. And there used to be a railroad spur. If you picture, look at a face like how Numia faces. You face Numia from the road here. You've got the building here and the building here, there used to be a railroad spur right here, right where the parking lot, the southern side, on the southern side is the best way to describe.
And Crowdy and Miller was there?
Yeah, and even before that, actually before that, there was a railroad spur there. And I'm not sure, are they looking to maybe put one back in? Or they could easily, if there's, if there's infrequent trains, they could easily unload, park there and unload too. But they will, they like that location because of the rail. Their idea is they would employ, well, forty to fifty people. And they like the idea because they could bring in the soybeans. It's a very high-tech, very high-tech, clean process. No real impact on city infrastructure at all as far as water, sewer. But they would bring them in by rail. They would process them here and then they would ship it back out. That's all I know about the company as far as that little aspect. But when I was asked to write a letter of support, especially if they're going to be creating forty to fifty jobs, I mean, I would be crazy not to write a letter of support.
Mr. Mayor, would you be kind enough to spell the name of the company?
Okay, Soyah, S O Y A, Canfrelia, C A N F R A L I A.
Thank you.
One more I in there.
There's an I in there, you skipped it.
It's spelled differently, actually, in a couple of places.
Oh, that's a I.
Oh, I made a typo. It's F R A I L I A. Laura, we missed a typo, we both missed a typo in the first, we spelled it wrong in the first sentence. The first, first sentence, we spelled it wrong. Right, it's F R A I.
There are two different spellings, end of the second.
And there's a soy, not Soyah.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's okay, it's been sent. They get the idea, I had Laura go through and we both missed some typos.
It was a quick ask.
It was quick. I was asked to get it sent within like an hour. And so I, I was at work and Laura was typing away, I was typing at the same time with the Google Doc and we got it out to them and that's the main thing.
It's part of the work that is coming out of the Vermont Quebec initiative, working through N D D A, bringing companies into our area. And this would be forty to fifty well-paying jobs for our area if they come.
Mr. Mayor or Karen, do either of you know if they would be taking both buildings or?
Just one building. They would be taking the Vermont Teddy Bear Factory building, that.
The southern building.
That southern building, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Doug is, would be using, is using the other building.
Yeah.
Is there any sense of how quickly this might happen?
It's up to the, it's up to venue.
Yeah.
Because they've got a bunch of financing lined up, but this is a critical piece.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And that's all I have for new business. That's all you have for new business? Okay, any new business?
The church has a delicious roast pork supper on Thursday.
Oh gee, I'm a rod, I'll have to go.
Yeah, lunch, I, I promised they'd do that.
I missed the lasagna.
It was really good.
Laura, do you have any new business?
Just to point out that the council has received a memo from Spencer Potter talking about where we are with the reappraisal process. And there was a roadmap and a timeline, and that has been posted on our website. It's on our homepage as well as the assessors' page, just to give folks an idea of what to expect. And there's a lot of blanks in the timeline and Spencer's going to update those as the process moves along, so you might want to check on that. That's all.
And to remind council members, you are all part of the V C A. So if we have a lot of tax appeals, you'll be asked to attend a lot of meetings.
Karen, you want to go last, Karen?
I'll be, I'll be on the way up this year.
Oh, that way you can get out of it, right? No, you're not going to get out of that, it's easy, Mr. Wilson. Okay, good.
Want everybody to go on vacation?
No, thank you, Laura. All right, moving on, old business, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, I'm just, three things. This is going to be fast, mentioning the website. I don't know how to put anything on the website, which is fine. But I did go on the city website and I followed city council, but as of like last Thursday, it was only three names, three names on it.
Oh, that was fixed.
It's been updated.
See, that was last Thursday, so that's updated, okay? Second one, thank you for getting, I hope, the sneakers removed off crossbar, but don't get overly excited. Those were the ones that were in the center of the road. So when I went by on Saturday to see if we had done what we should, there's another pair up there, almost identical place, a little closer and over the sidewalk.
New pair? This, this wasn't here before?
No, it's a different pair, these are darker sneakers. So either the guy has a lot of sneakers or he's really trying to say that, hey, you can stop in here and get your stuff. So we need to call him again?
So, Mr. Wilson, that, that is colloquially known as a sort of a, like a, a sign of a particular kind of business that happens to be illegal?
Yes.
And I guess you know that, but it's, we took down his business sign and then we put it back out.
And then the last thing I have is, hazmat day was last Saturday? It was very good. And the twenty years I've lived in Newport, we've got two a year. But when we got our last water bill, there's another one in there. Is there a reason now that we're going to do the mid-one in August and then the regular October?
No, our swipe plan said that we would do three in this year. And, I know, and I am requesting a waiver of that because we had our day Saturday, we had only forty-four cars show up. And in the fall, we had sixty-six cars show up. So in order for me to get out of the August household hazardous waste event, I have to ask permission from the Department, the Agency of Natural Resources, one of their departments. So I don't have that permission yet.
Right now, we're just going out.
It would be easier to, to advertise it and then cancel it because we do, we will have the one in October.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was put in our swipe plan, our swipe plan has been approved. I don't have a, we, we were equally surprised because that's a budget issue for us.
Yeah.
So we've got some more work to do and if it gets canceled, I'll make sure people know in plenty of time.
So is it, it's still a go, the August fifth one then?
Right now, it's still a go because I've not received permission to have it waived.
They really do serve a good purpose.
Now, forty-four cars are from Newport City, because that's opened up to other communities too.
We did, we actually had the cars pulled, out of the forty-four cars, only two were fresh from the mall. So it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good ratio.
As far as, they ask them where they live?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any other?
I was just curious about your website meeting. How did that go with the other company and how's that going along?
I'll be, I'll be getting an update most likely at our next meeting, so we can fill you on that.
Great.
I don't have any old business, any old business? Or anything in the old business?
Yep, our, our next centennial meeting will be scheduled for Thursday, June fifteenth is a longer one, five to seven. And meeting tonight, it was productive and people left with a large to-do list. And the next meeting will whittle down the calendar of events so people can get a clear shot at what we've got planned so far.
Okay.
Can I ask one thing? Ma'am, could you send me the two dates, when we're going to have our union negotiations again? I know we're fiddling around and it was kind of an irritating day anyways, and I didn't really write when we're going to do this again.
Yeah, I think I need to have a schedule to make.
I just want to remind the board that anything involving negotiations is confidential. We are still going through negotiations, there's been no resolution, so I'll make sure that you guys are informed and we actually need to have a meeting three and a half tomorrow.
We just need to know the date.
I'll make sure.
Yeah, because I don't believe I put it on my calendar.
Well, yeah, I got a calendar, I'm ready to write the date on the calendar.
Yeah, okay. All right, then the next regular city council meeting will be Monday, June fifth, two thousand seventeen. And we need a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-four.
Still moving, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made, is there a second?
There is a second.
All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.